My God, folks, it is 2019. The biggest story rolls going on SmackDown right now is McMahon's receiving Stone Cold stunners. Who'd have thought? Hi folks, welcome to the Spectral Podcast. It's your host here Kyle. You can find me on Twitter at TheKaiTaiShow. You can follow the channel at SmackDrawPod. Mr. Rob Rude is out right now. He should be joining us any moment though. And we might even get Benji. Oh, I think that's him right there. At least Rob. If you're new to the channel, man, we're a WWE main card podcast. We mainly cover Raw, SmackDown, NXT 205 Live, the pay-per-views. Cover what like TakeOver? That's pretty cool too.
AEW, Ring of Honor, Impact. No, I'm just joking.
Maybe later.
I got time to watch all that shit off, man.
Maybe if we can get paid to do this, I wouldn't mind it, but boy, Jesus, ain't enough hours in the day. Joining us folks is Mr. Rob Rude. Say what's up dude?
What is going on, man? SmackDown was good. I just wanted to...
Oh yeah, that's what our show is about today. SmackDown Live. A good SmackDown Live in my opinion. Boy, it was, it was pretty good. It was pretty good. I'm trying to think, we had the open forum or what? The town, town meeting? Town Hall meeting? That was, that was an interesting, interesting take. Trying to think, man. I already plugged our show. Plugged our Twitter. Oh man, where you can actually listen to us. If you're listening to us on Podbean or Spotify, which is arguably the easiest way to take in your favorite podcast, we can also be found on YouTube. And if you guys wouldn't mind, please hop over on YouTube. Search for SmackDraw Podcast, three words. And give us a like and a subscribe. We are on the road to 100 subscribers. Last I checked, Rob, we have a whopping like 26 subscribers.
Yeah, y'all 26 are great.
We appreciate every one of you bots. I swear. Like we do. Oh my gosh. No, man. If you guys, hey man, if you're, if you're some of the few, man, here, you know, when we, when we inevitably blow up because we will be one of, if not the best professional wrestling podcast. I said it. That's not hosted by a professional wrestler. Cause apparently every, every wrestler seems to have their own damn podcast.
Talking Jericho.
You guys will be able to say that. You've been with us since the beginning, man. You've seen us since the dark days. Since, uh, since our podcasts were running three hours long. Cause me and Rob would get too drunk and just ramble forever. Poor Rob would have to wake up two hours later to go to work.
You know what's funny? I'll make it fast, I promise. You just reminded me to be rambling about wrestling. I had a paper in high school. I forget what the paper was about, but I know I talked about a WWF event I went to in 97. And I killed a page and a half just what happened at the event. And it worked.
Nice. Nice. Oh man.
Wow. Ooh, random memories firing.
Yeah, but once again, yeah, let me, let me stress that plug. Please subscribe to our YouTube page, man. That is our, that's our current focus along with, I'm, you know, I'm trying to, I'm trying to give the show a little bit more polish, Rob. I'm trying to, you know, get better at the editing and then finding the still images. Tonight, I'm kinda tired. But I wanna, I wanna make our show look legit too. You know what I mean? Like so, when you see the thumbnails, when you see the descriptions on YouTube, you're like, man, that's a major player right there in the, in the wrestling podcast realm of things, you know? I want us to be that. And part of that, we gotta look that part too. So I'm trying, man. I'm trying. And if y'all have any suggestions, man, what you like, what catches your eye, or what you wanna hear? Because that is the sizzle in the steak on the podcast, man. Reach out to us, man. Let us know. We're open to criticism. I know Benji's kinda sensitive. Uh, you know, I can say that because he ain't on the show right now. But me and Rob can take it. All right? You know, we got thick skin. Cause we, we, we understand what's up, man. We understand what's up. But anyways, anyways, enough of, enough of the, the action.
Thinking of what's up, what's up with Shane McMahon? Asking a superstar's what's up?
Yeah dude, good segue, Rob. Um, Rob, so I missed, I, right now, my cable is a streaming service. So it actually cut off. I, I turned it on and we were at the part where Charlotte-
Okay, I watched it. What do you need? What do you need? I got you.
I tuned in where Charlotte was kissing Shane McMahon's ass. Was anything going on before that?
Um, Roman Reigns should be fucking fired. Fire him for talking shit to Shane McMahon.
What?
Just saying. He, he talks so much shit to Shane McMahon.
Oh, I missed it.
He, he, he basically got on there and like in my notes, this isn't here, but holy shit, my memory's working. Oh my God. Basically, Roman Reigns, Roman Reigns was the first one to take the mic. And I don't remember exactly what he said, but basically what he said is Shane, I'm gonna tell you what everybody else in this building feels. We don't respect you. And that's what he said. That's what he said. And then that's why you tuned in on Charlotte Flair kissing ass. Like no, that's bullshit. We, we respect you. And so, yeah. So Roman Reigns should be fired for saying nobody respects him. Because I respect him. I respect the best in the world. Roman, come at me. Come at me, bro. Come at me.
Look, this is why we need to dox Rob's account. Get his Twitter account, just crash it. No, I'm kidding. So this segment to me, uh, wasn't the greatest because I felt like ultimately it was just a tool to set up matches for later in the evening. Because during the forum, it set up Charlotte Flair against Liv Morgan. Morgan called Charlotte out, called her fake. And, and Charlotte said, no, you're fake. Cause your tongue's not really blue. Um, and then Buddy Murphy came out, said he'll fight Kevin Owens. Which was, this was cool to see Buddy Murphy get some shine. So apparently he's gonna be a heel. Um, Apollo Crews came out, said that he speaks for everyone. And that Shane needs to get off TV. Well, Zelena Vega says, you don't speak for us. In fact, why don't you face Omjade? Which that was a terrible accent. I just mocked. I'm sorry folks, that was horrible.
So you say that that's all you've seen this, this as. What like, what I see this as-
It sounds like Roman was the only one that pushed the narrative. You suck Shane, get off TV. And then everybody else just set up matches afterwards.
That's what everybody wants to hear. That's valid. But I, I do wanna plug it out there that it could just be a work. It could be just a one week thing with everybody that's listening to what's news.
Dude, no, make this every week, people just talking trash to Shane. Like break his will. Like kill his self-confidence.
Not even, not even necessarily that. Not even necessarily that. Um, Kevin Owens goes off last week and says, you don't have Buddy Murphy. You don't have this guy. You don't have that guy. You don't have Liv Morgan. You don't have these guys on TV. Blah, blah, blah. Kevin Owens went off and spoke what the WWE, the hardcore WWE universe, you and I feels. And then Shane has this town hall thing, which at first seemed stupid, but we got Liv Morgan. We got Buddy Murphy.
That is true. Wow, I didn't even think about that.
Who's the third guy? The black eye?
The black eye? Jeez, what, Kofi?
No, no, the third guy that got a spot that we haven't seen. Apollo Crews? Is that his name? Him. That's three guys that you haven't seen in three months. I didn't mean that to come out that way.
No, no, well Apollo's been, Apollo has been on our TV, but he's been mainly coming out and jobbing.
Okay. And he's after not to have it.
Look, I didn't, I didn't even think of that, Rob. No, that was a very good point.
Like, I mean, so it could be a one week thing, but I took this as, oh my God, they're actually listening. Like they just put three people on our television that people have been saying X deserves at least a week. Like, and now we got it.
No, you're right. Cause yeah, cause up until this point, we didn't get Liv. You're right. And we didn't get, um, we didn't, I mean, granted Buddy Murphy didn't wrestle that night, but we acknowledged that he's on the show finally.
Valid.
And then Apollo Crews.
And we seen his big old chest. I mean, like he should hang out with Lashley and they should have just a heck war.
Dude, how did Buddy Murphy make 205? Cause he's a 205 Live competitor. That dude is jacked.
Wasn't he the cruiserweight champ when he lost it at WrestleMania?
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, he lost it.
So I mean, if, if anything out of this, they got some TV time and we'll talk more about it later, but Liv set something up.
Yeah, Liv did get a good, a good little story set up for her.
I looked, I looked at this as they're listening. They're changing things around. Now, as I said, when I first started what I'm talking about, it could be a one week thing. It could vanish next week and it never happened. But I mean, it's, they might be listening because we got TV time.
No, you're very right. You're very right. Um, the segment did end. Ultimately Elias came out, mocked the new day. Kofi started to lay some truth on Shane. Shane cut his mic off and said, hey, look, that's it for today's forum. Sorry champ, that your mic got cut off. It's some technical issues. Y'all leave. After, as everyone's just quietly leaving the top of the ramp, cause that's where all the wrestlers were. This wasn't held backstage. This was Shane in the ring and everybody standing at the ramp. Um, like most of, if not the entire SmackDown roster. As they're leaving, Cesaro comes out. He's I guess a wild card. Um, cause he's a Raw wrestler and he challenges-
He actually mentioned, he mentioned he was a wild card. He, he straight up said, I'm a wild card.
Yeah, which is cool. They're not shoving it down our throat, but it is just, it's so weird. Um, he challenges Alistair Black to a rematch from, uh, Extreme Rules. Rob, I know you don't watch matches that you already know the outcome. Go back and watch that match, bro. Watch dude, watch Alistair Black and Cesaro. They tear it down dude. Oh, it's so good. Um, but anyways, Shane, Shane says, you know what? I like that Cesaro. I like the cut of your jib, you know? I'm gonna give you that match. Um, and then as he addresses the crowd, uh, similar to the whole how Drew McIntyre, there's that gif circulating of Drew McIntyre appearing behind The Undertaker as Undertaker staring down the camera. We got the same exact thing, but now it's Kevin Owens appearing behind, um, uh, Shane O'Mac. And he delivers him a stunner. And just like I said in the show open, it's 2019 and our number one story is revolve McMahon's get receiving Stone Cold stunners.
I don't like it. I don't like Kevin Owens doing the stunner. At first I was about it, but now it just seems funny.
Someone's gotta do it, Rob. You can't let the stunner die with Stone Cold.
No, you do let the stunner die with Stone Cold.
Someone's gotta do the stunner, Rob.
I said, ooh, I said it on, I think last week's show or the show before, that I remember when Jim Ross was tuning in next week to learn Stone Cold Steve Austin's new finish move. When the stunner didn't even exist. And now you're talking about Kevin Owens doing it. No, I don't like him doing it. If he does keep doing it, I'm not gonna bitch and complain. It is what it is. I just, I don't care for it. But I do wanna say-
You need to appreciate is when he started doing it, it wasn't putting people away. They were kicking out. Now, when he delivers the stunner-
I can't appreciate that. If you listen to our Raw episode, then you, you'll know that I don't appreciate people kicking out a finish move.
But that's what I'm saying. Now, when he delivers the stunner, you're done. There ain't no kicking out.
I do, I do wanna plug the tweet. I actually said it on last week's show too. Somebody tweeted Kevin Owens stole Stone Cold stunner. And somebody commented and was like, it ain't like Steve Austin's using it. And Stone Cold himself chimed in and said, you're wrong, Mark. I used it on a guy at Walmart yesterday.
Oh, Stone Cold, he's a gem. I hope he's at that Raw reunion. I think he's gonna be at that Raw reunion next week.
Yes, he got, he got a plug on like the, the graphic for it and everything. He's gonna be on there. But I did-
Raw reunion. That'll be a fun episode to do.
Did Owens miss the stunner? Because like Shane dropped.
Shane dropped with the initial kick. That was weird. I think Shane tried to sell the stunner before Owens did it.
Went for the stunner? Okay. I wasn't sure. I caught that it got botched. I didn't know he did it.
Shane ate the kick and then dropped afterwards, like way ahead of the stunner. So I don't know if he stumbled from getting kicked in the gut. Or if he just tried to sell the stunner way too fast. Um, but it's another reason why we need you Shane off our fucking TV. Best in the world. Okay. Can't even sell a goddamn stunner, right? I'm sorry.
What's, what's the ring announcer's name? Do you know his name?
Oh, I can't remember. I can't remember.
Okay, I'll just plug ring announcer. When I, I did a tweet of Shane saying best in the world or whatever. And somebody commented and was like, I can't wait till so-and-so just says, nope, I'm not doing it.
Dude, yeah, no, enough of the locker room turns on Shane and Shane's like, hey, hey, give me my ring. And I think he's like, no.
He just handed him the mic and walked back. He'd do it.
Heads it off to like, one of like Shane's like kiss asses. Like he gives it to Corey Graves and makes Corey Graves do it. That would be awesome. Done Shane. Done being bullied. Be a star. Um, the, the, oh my God, this is too fun. The match between Alistair Black and Cesaro takes place. Alistair Black this time wins in much more convincing fashion, which is good. These boys should not be wrestling too much immediately following that match at Extreme Rules. Cause these guys, they ate some legit shots. You don't, you don't go through the car wreck they went through and then tell them 48 hours later to produce that same match. Like no, so I'm, I'm happy, um, Alistair Black came out, got the win. And even, it's even better that Black won more convincingly because had they just done like 50 50 booking and had Cesaro come out, it would've made them both look dumb. Cesaro's good, man. Cesaro has a legit excuse to why he lost. He took a match too shortly after his, you know, the, the beat down at Extreme Rules and then the, the Battle Royal on Raw. So I think everyone looks fine here.
Valid. This, this is reminiscent of, uh, cause those who didn't see Alistair Black won with like that spin kick to the face.
Yeah, the black mask.
Cesaro's mouthpiece got kicked out of his mouth.
That looks so good.
And it was reminiscent of when Kylie Ray got her bow kicked off her head at Double or Nothing. And it made me so sad. Does that already make me as sad? But when Kylie Ray got kicked in the face, it made me so sad. I would've been able to stomach it if her bow didn't get knocked off. It made me so sad.
That's good.
Like legit. Cause those who don't know, I'm a big Pokemon mark. And in the Indies, Kylie Ray comes out to the original Pokemon song. That's my spirit wrestler. I don't care. I don't care who you are. Hornswoggle could come out to the Pokemon song. You're my spirit wrestler.
Rob, this is why you're the star of this show. Because a lot of wrestling fans are predictable with their outtakes. Dude, you never know where Rob's coming from, Ben. Rob, you hit with such, such a unique perspective of what, like what hits you? I love it, man. I love, genuinely love doing this podcast with you. I really do, Ben. Oh my God, man. Benji can suck it. Um, no, this is so cruel. I play, I play both sides of the fence here, folks. Cause I host the, me and Rob host Raw and SmackDown together. And if you guys tune in, it's just me and Benji on 205 Live and NXT. And then if you get all three of us together, I take a backseat and just let Benji and Rob fight. It's awesome.
Shout to Benji though, for real. When I first made my wrestle Twitter account, he was one of the first guys to make fun of me.
Benji's good. Benji's good people, man. He is. He's, he's good people. He needs to hurry up and come up with those super clips. Or, um, or at least, I, so I reached, I don't even think I told you, Rob, I reached out to Benji to create a, um, video graphic of our logo for our intro. So it's not just a still image. It might rotate. It might have explosions, fireworks, whatever. To go with the music. Benji said, give him three days. That's some bitch. It was two weeks ago I said this shit. But Benji, Benji's a workhorse, man. He's doing, he, that dude, he, I don't know where he finds the hours. Like you and him both, man. I don't know where y'all find the hours to sleep. Cause between your real life work and then Benji, he collaborates with so many people. Like he is everywhere. It's lucky that we're actually his, his home base podcast. Cause apparently dude, he was ready to be signed and we were just the lucky ones to scoop him up. So that's pretty cool. Um, but enough kissing Benji's ass. He sucks.
Yeah, here. This could be, this could be a three-way tag team champion match. And we'd be losing because it's only two of us.
His ass is taking care of real life stuff. Probably doing shitty stand-up comedy or something in Chicago. Whatever, man. Whatever.
Super, super, super fast plug. You know, guys, you'll notice I have random fired memories and I have to throw them out there. Stand-up comedy back in like 1990. I was flipping channels. And this comedy guy, like I love, I love my memories, man. Like I was flipping and this guy on stage was like, I got pulled over the other day. Cause I was driving down the street and I was gonna make a left, but I decided not to. And then I seen a sign that said, no U-turn. So I turned around to go make my right and I got pulled over.
What the fuck, Rob? Dude, you are so damn random. Oh my gosh. Let's get back to SmackDown, dude. This is going off the rails. Oh my gosh.
You said comedy, man. Yo, U-turn.
Back to the show. Um, after the-
What do we got next? We got Liv and Flair, right? There's something there I didn't know.
Liv, Liv puts up a fight, but you can tell after a couple of minutes, she's outmatched. Um, Charlotte essentially, once Charlotte gets her groove, buzzsaws through her, hits her with a nice powerbomb. It's nice to see Charlotte with that powerbomb. She needs to break that out more. Um, and then she transitions from the powerbomb into her figure eight. Uh, Liv Morgan taps out. Just short, not quite a squash match, but pretty close 2-1.
Liv Morgan like double tapped out. She tapped out with both hands. That's actually in my notes because, oh man.
I love that they didn't write her off though. Cause she went and she grabbed, I think Corey Graves headset, right?
Yes, yes. And because-
And she said Charlotte's right. I something, what'd she say? That like?
She, she said like, uh, like, cause earlier in the, in the, in SmackDown, I was gonna say in the match, um, at the beginning of the show, if you got, you guys heard us talk about it. Charlotte basically, basically knocked Liv's blue tongue. Basically saying, you're a fake character. You're not real. So Liv's thing was she took Corey Graves headset and said, Charlotte's right. I'm gonna come back real. So this brings me to what I said a little bit ago about how this whole town hall thing is kinda giving us what we want. Because one of the biggest things that people are complaining about is Liv Morgan isn't getting TV time. Liv Morgan is amazing. She's an amazing character. The Riot Squad was amazing. But Liv Morgan, she's very good.
You notice her every time she's on TV too. Like, like she really draws your attention.
But she is a fake character. Like she's real, but the, the pink hair and the blue tongue and the Harley Quinn type deal going on.
They made her like the rebellious, like teenager in high school character. Yeah.
And basically what she told Graves is I'm about to be repackaged. And we all know that a repackage can be career. You're, you're going places.
Something.
You're going places.
So you think that she's gonna come out in like a natural hair color?
Yes, natural blonde hair, maybe glasses, not live life. She's like, I think they're gonna go all out and give her a 100% repackage.
That'd be cool, man. I'm excited. Then she needs a convincing win. She needs a convincing win over someone too. So it's not just one thing to change your image. You also have to make a splash.
Right, right. Come out and prove yourself.
So I say, I say a little fantasy booking here. She comes out, she beats, let's see, she comes out, who, who can eat some losses that aren't major players? She comes out, she beats Naomi, um, in a close match. And then she beats, who's a big player, but it is not Charlotte. She comes out, she beats, who she beat? She can't beat Amber Moon. Um, she beat Sonya Deville, right?
That was just, that was named Andy or Sonya.
Yeah. And then that sets her up for her rematch and she can beat Charlotte. And that way you have a good story that doesn't revolve around the belt. You know, Charlotte, Charlotte appears as the major threat. You know, you have to get through stuff with people.
We go back to tonight.
Exactly.
Boom. She, yes.
That's cool, man. Book it WWE. I did it for you. All right? I did it for you.
Hashtag no blue tongue.
No blue tongue hashtag. All right. Um, Fire and Desire come out. So they've been booking this match a week ahead of time. Uh, last week, uh, Fire and Desire, Sonya Deville, Amber Moon, or no, excuse me, not Amber Moon, uh, Amber Rose? What? Why am I drawing a blank right now? It's, it's, it's not Amber Rose. It's Mandy Rose. Jesus.
Mandy Rose.
I watch wrestling. I swear I do, folks. Um, they challenge, uh, Amber Moon to a tag match for this week. They say, you know, you can get a partner of your choosing, you know, if you can find someone. So the, the intrigue for the week leading into it is who's Amber Moon gonna find as a partner? Um, personally speaking, I wasn't too excited, but I see what they did with it. So it makes sense. Comes out, she reveals that she got the SmackDown Women's Champion. Boy, if you're gonna get a tag partner, get the damn champ of your division as your partner. And they, um, they end up fricking, uh, they end up just tearing through Fire and Desire. Like, like, um, Sonya and, and Rose, they come out the gates quick. They try to jump them as they're getting ready for the match. Uh, in the ring, you know? And, um, but it's, it's quickly thwarted off. Um, it, it, and it just devolves into a straight up squash match. Bayley hitting the belly-to-belly on Sonya Deville. Um, and then, uh, Moon hitting her Eclipse, which by the way, is the best finisher in all of WWE on, um, on Mandy Rose. After the match, um-
I missed it. Is that the, the stunner thing off the top rope that I marked out about last week? Okay.
Yeah, yeah. It's that top rope, like fricking torquing stunner. That's just, oh, that's so good. Um, after the match, the, one of the, uh, uh, interviewers rudely just disregards the tag team victory. It was just like, yeah, I think it was Charlie. She was just like, Bailey, congratulations. What are you gonna do at SummerSlam to defend your belt? Like Amber Moon's like standing there. Like if I was Amber Moon, I'm like, bitch, like I was in this match too. But, um, it was for a reason. Um, Bayley essentially, they ask, you know, who do you wanna face? So I guess the champ gets to pick their opponent, uh, for SummerSlam.
This right here made me, I don't, um, I, I can't pinpoint exactly what it is. I don't like Bayley on the microphone. I don't like her talking. I don't wanna hear her talk in the mic anymore. I don't know if it's her voice.
It's the franchise effect, Todd. I told you, man. Not everybody works as a franchise. Bailey don't work as a franchise.
It's like, no, it's not even, I don't, I just don't like her on the mic. She could be the most over wrestler in the history of ever. And she'd be on the mic and I'm just, I cringe. I don't, I think it's her voice or the way she carries her voice. I don't know. I can't pinpoint it. I just don't like it.
Cause I don't, I know you said, so you, you joined in in 2019, but Bayley's character has always been the lifelong, the lifelong wrestling fan who's just like everybody else.
Again, I'll bring up the outside looking in for years. Bailey was always my boo. So I do know that she grew up being a fan and it was her dream. And then she finally made it. So I do know that much. I, I have liked Bailey. Like when I had to pick a wrestler while I wasn't watching, Bailey was my pick. But I wasn't watching, so I didn't hear her on the mic.
So, but maybe, maybe the fact that, cause you like, if I recall correctly, like you like your characters over the top, larger than life. And maybe Bailey's just too grounded for you. Maybe because Bailey is a very grounded character. You know what I mean? If you, if you took away, if you just, just played audio, it sounds like some chick at like Costco.
Just talking. I'm on the mic, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, like just some normal girl at Costco.
I think, I think that's probably it. I don't know.
Sitting here trying to be your therapist.
I can't exactly pinpoint it. I just, I mean, there's been people I don't like on the mic, but I brushed it off for her. I'm just like, I don't-
I'm not, I won't lie. I'm not the biggest, I'm not the hugest Bailey fan. I don't hate her by no means. I just, I don't lose my stuff. Especially when she's on the mic, but I do like her as a champ and I do like how she's being booked as a strong champion. Cause she, she, I know you missed it, but she handed, uh, both Nikki Cross and Alexa Bliss their asses in that handicap match. She beat them both decisively. No help, no shenanigans, no luck. She was the much superior wrestler in that match. And Bailey needs that force. She's always been lucky. She's always been plucky. She's always been the underdog. And it doesn't always work. She needed, if she's gonna be the champ, she needs to portray herself as the champ. And it was good to see her do that. Um, but with that all being said, Amber Moon's the opponent and I ain't gonna lie, dude, I'm ready for Amber Moon to be champ, bro. I am so-
Valid.
Amber Moon has gotta be the most athletically gifted, fastest worker in the women's division. And arguably you can put her up there in the whole roster. She still stands out. Top maybe 10, maybe top 15 in the top, um, all the wrestlers in the WWE, if you go pound for pound, what they're good at, you know? Like Amber Moon can run circles around most of the female division if you let her go, you know? And, um, yeah, and I've seen it, man. Like she is, she really is a breakout waiting to happen. And I'm just waiting for that match that showcases it and also books her strong. Meaning like not only give her like a plucky match that the hardcore fans like, no, you put her front and center and show what she can do. Cause she is a star, bro. Like Amber Moon is a bona fide star. Um, I'm, I'm kinda fanboying over here. I ain't gonna lie. For real though, I'm for real, man. She is dude. She's, she's got me, man. And it ain't, it ain't even, you know, she got the looks too, but it ain't even that. That chick is just, she's all around, son.
Going into the whole town hall, listening to the fans sing. Like Amber Moon was another one on the list. And people were like, why is she not getting TV time? All of a sudden she's got a title match. Out of nowhere. Like, oh my God.
I do feel bad that, um, her NXT championship reign was, was pretty, uh, I don't know how to put it, like, um, disingenuous, I guess. I don't know. Uh, cause Asuka, it came after Asuka's reign of terror. Asuka was undefeated for her entire NXT tenureship. The, Asuka was in NXT for over a year? Can't remember exactly how long. I don't think it was quite two years. But, um, Asuka buzzed through the division, got a hold of the title, never lost it. Had to vacate it due to injury and then getting called up to the main roster. And so Amber Moon was the champion who won it in a, I believe a fatal four-way, I wanna say. But she never got to pin Asuka to have the passing of the torch. And that always is gonna take away some of the shine as your championship. Cause you'll always- And that always is gonna take away some of the shine as your championship, cause you'll always have that asterix next to you. Like, oh yeah, you're champ, but you didn't even beat the person that was champ before you. You know, in fact, that champion was never defeated at all. So.
Right.
But it's a minor gripe, you know? Ho- hopefully that's a story years down the road, man. Her and Asuka face off, she gets that victory finally. Um, let me see here. So that, that's it. Yeah, you got, uh, you got, uh, Amber, Amber Moon, um, going to SummerSlam. Uh, backstage, oh Ross, you didn't, you probably didn't pick up on the New Japan reference. But Nakamura claims he is free to rain down chaos. In WWE, which is a callback to his New Japan faction he was a leader of. He was the leader of the Chaos faction. So I, I was, I was hyped. Looks like they're setting up Ali, cause Ali came into frame, said, congrats champ. What do you think of this matchup, Rob?
I'm down for it. Like, I, I've said it before, I don't care for Shinsuke. Like I, I don't mind him. Like I don't, I'm not gonna be like, boo. But I, I don't care for him and I, I'm like.
You, you may have a little bit too much to drink sometimes and you troll the shit out of some Shinsuke.
Sometimes I'm like, hey shit, staying not tomorrow. I mean, I'm sorry. That's, that's what I hear when I hear his name. No disrespect. That's what I hear. But y'all know I'm a jokester and I do things like that. Um, as for Ali, as for Ali, I haven't seen him enough. To, I mean, I like Ali. Don't get me wrong, but I haven't seen him enough for me to be like, yeah, I want Ali to win the belt. So this match is more of a, I don't really care who wins for me, but I'm definitely down to watch it. Cause they both got good styles. And Ali comes out looking like Scorpion. So I mean, I can't be like, yeah, who's Scorpion?
Most people compare him to like a Power Ranger, so that's cool.
That's, uh, Power, I don't know. I don't see Power Ranger. I see Scorpion.
Um, I think it's just gonna serve, I think it's just gonna serve to, Nakamura's gonna get a strong victory over another name. I think, I don't, I, I don't think it's gonna be a, a, cause Nakamura.
I mean, it kinda.
It looks like they're building Nakamura back up.
I mean, it kinda has to be. You can't have him win the belt from like Finn and then all of a sudden just lose it.
Yeah, yeah. I mean. It'd make Ali look good, but Ali to me, unfortunately, I think Ali, right now, his spot is taken by Ricochet. Cause they have similar move sets. They're both plucky. Uh, Ali has the better promos though. His, his pre-film promos are.
Just not good on the mic. He's just not good.
He's okay. He's not terrible, but you're right. He's not, he's not captivating.
He hasn't had to practice really.
I don't know what it is. He, yeah, he's just, he's not the most captivating person, but.
And it, it doesn't help that finally like when he was in the ring with like, what was it, Money in the Bank or whatever? Where those eight guys in the ring and you, you could tell he finally poked his chest out to say something and McIntyre's like, who are you?
Didn't give him much of a chance.
Who are you?
But anyways, yeah, I'm excited for the match. I know a lot of you guys aren't even caring about the outcome. These two. Are probably gonna have great chemistry, gonna put on a great match and that's what I expect. Um. So this is the segment of the night where I was like, fucking SmackDown. I can't believe you got me. You fucking got me. So the new day.
Gets me is, what gets me is, I, I won't, I won't spoil it, but we got trolled.
Got trolled so hard. We got trolled so hard by SmackDown. I mean, granted, they had to find different ways. To create what happened. But this is not how you do it. So.
Trolled me twice.
New Day come out. Yeah, yeah, Rob, oh yeah, yeah, we did get trolled twice. So New Day come out. Celebrate, they're holding all the gold. I like they crack a joke that the, the tag championships are white gold.
I mean, a white gold.
And, um, and then they're also, they're like, you know what? Daniel Bryan's got a big announcement. We're just gonna spoil the announcement and say, we do accept. Your rematch challenge, um, whatever. So Brian comes out. Um, looks emotionally wrecked. Like dude looks wrecked. Uh, can't muster up to say anything, so he comes out. Holds the mic, silent, goes backstage. He does this three times. And then ultimately exits without saying a word. Uh.
He exited because of the New Day Rocks chant.
Yeah.
That's, that's what set him off. Now he kept like squinting his eyes, like something's wrong with his head. I think that was. Was this subliminal or that was just him being him?
I think that's him supposed to be emotional. Like he's just emotionally wrecked, losing his titles. Cause his whole, his whole thing was, he was campaigning. To elevate the tag division and ultimately get a WrestleMania that's main evented by a tag team match. Um, and that was his goal, is his whole wrestling newfound purpose. That's what he's working towards. And now that he lost his championship to one of the tag teams he referred to as a joke. It's, he's distraught. So I get that he's wrecked. But it doesn't, no one, no one likes the whole come out. Be silent, walk away, you know, it's, it's just, it doesn't do much for anybody.
So that, that, that's valid, but. Do you, if, if Daniel Bryan, anybody else on the planet, it doesn't work. Daniel Bryan, it works.
We'll see. It, it's one of those wait and see things.
But it works. Like I was so ready for what this guy had to tell us. And like, it goes beyond like. That, that, like I, I told my wife last week, we gave Daniel Bryan a good 15 minutes of our time, just talking about how good he is at. Being a wrestler. Not even just wrestling, just being Daniel Bryan, just giving his all on everything.
When he, when he covers over, he will go down, is like, there'll be that argument, who's the greatest wrestler of all time? He'll be in a lot of people's conversations.
Valid.
Yeah.
I took this as like a him as a man. What is your announcement? Like, did you get concussed? Did you catch a headshot that last month when you were out for a minute? Like, are, is your career over again? Or, which I don't think that's the thing now. I think they're just being a troll.
I saw some speculation that, um, that, uh. He's going to announce he departs SmackDown and goes to 205 Live to elevate that show. Which in theory. Could be good, cause it's, it's, it's a, it's a sore spot in that show's history. But when Enzo Amore landed on it, it did bring more eyes to the show. It didn't last because it's. Enzo Amore, but when you do take a star and you put him on that show. The ratings do go up. I don't know, man. Also, not, not to mention also that, Daniel Bryan, what does he love to do? He loves to wrestle. Uh, what's going on, Rob? You're not watching the program, but what's going on on 205 Live? On their hour-long program, they host two matches, three tops. And typically the main event is like a minimum of 20 minutes. Daniel Bryan, if he went to 205 Live, he would get the freedom to put on some of the greatest matches. That he can put on in the ring. Uh, which, which is what Daniel Bryan on screen and behind the scenes loves to do. He loves to wrestle. So in theory, he is a perfect fit for 205 Live. It's just unfortunate. 205 Live isn't the biggest platform, you know?
Man, ooh, this is the first I've heard of this. Do you really wanna take your former World Wrestling Entertainment Champion and put him at the bottom of the barrel?
Well, see, here's the thing is, is 205 Live is, is, is getting, it's obviously it's nowhere's close. To Raw, SmackDown, and then even NXT. It, it, when you, when you take those four shows, it is, it's at the bottom. But I'm not gonna lie, Rob. 205 Live is a lot of fun. And I mean, it might be a fit because I mean, let's, so let's, we can take a second here, cause we're actually, we're doing okay on time. What else could Daniel Bryan do right now? So we've had, we've had the face.
You wanna, you wanna know what he could do? Okay. My, you know what my, it, I, mm, I was about to say expectation. May- maybe more fantasy. I don't know. You know what I wanted? You know what I wanted this announcement to be? For him to come out and not say anything? Put the mic down, point at the rafters and start, yes, yes, yes.
Face turn?
Go back to face. That's your announcement. You did your heel thing. Now he's a great heel. He brings money. He'll probably never go face again. But that was my first thought. Look at the crowd and go, yes, yes, yes. You did your thing. You had the tag titles. You do planet champion the tag titles. You had the world title. You planets championed the world title. You made everybody recycle. You became the WWE's case man.
You made everyone recycle?
You did your thing.
We all drive Priuses now?
Right, because of you. Now, you say yes, yes, yes. Rowan looks at you in disgust and goes back to the locker room. You don't have to punch him. You don't have to turn on him. You just disgust him enough to go away. Boom. Yes, 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 move us back in town.
I don't know.
There you go. Daniel Bryan, all over again.
I mean, I can, I can see that, but like, this is my thing is. Daniel Bryan is, is the type of guy that is starting to like Randy Orton have done it all. So for one, he'll never be as big of a face as he was at WrestleMania 30. When he got the, uh, the world championship in that triple threat. Main event with, with Triple H and, and Batista. You're never gonna top that as a face moment, you know? And then, so I think it was smart that. He came back, he had that initial babyface push, which arguably didn't go over that well because of the matchups they put him in. They had him start off against this guy, Big Cass, and it's, it's just went over like a wet fart, Rob.
Did that guy get fired?
Yeah, yeah. He got him and, yeah, he got fired. Um, but, um, so you turn the guy heel. And you give him a heel run with the world championship. So bang, bam. And then not to mention. He gets about as much popularity in that heel run as he could garnish. Because once again, you're always, whenever he's a face, he's always gonna be compared to that WrestleMania 30 run. Which you're never gonna top that, you know? So then what you do is he elevated the tag division. He creates a fun tag team, cause we can do that. So we've done that. And this is the second time he did that. First time he did that was with Kane, you know? So I think in the realm of doing something different, so you're not competing with your previous accolades. 205 Live makes sense in that realm. Just in that realm, to keep him from competing with what he's already done. Anything else, he's gonna compete with his former self. Um, so it's, it's a matter of how you look at it, which way you wanna book it. I totally see where you're coming from and you are not wrong. But in my opinion, eh, the different thing, to do something different with him. You, you send him to 205 Live and, um, have him, because he elevates everything he touches. That's, that is the truth with Daniel Bryan. No one gave a damn about those SmackDown tag titles. I can't tell you who was champion before them. I can't even remember, honestly. Maybe the Usos, but I cannot recall. But, um.
Hang on, disrespect the Usos.
I'm telling you, it's just, he elevates anything he's a part of. That's our argument. And if you have 205 Live struggling, who, you know what I mean? Who has a better resume to elevate it than Daniel Bryan? I was. But, ah, man, I don't know. That is really farfetched. It is very farfetched, so I don't know. But, um.
Does he even really have an announcement? Or was that just a?
I think so. I don't think that Daniel Bryan would, I don't think it. I think something's gonna happen. I hope it's not the farewell, I hope it's not the farewell tour. Hope it's not the farewell tour that I thought it was.
Maybe they'll save it for two more weeks and like, I'll get to hear it live.
Hey, yes.
Yes.
He's come out to SmackDown, he's like, hey, you guys.
Wishful thinking.
Stick around after the show, cause I'll be on 205 Live. I can hear you being happy and angry at the same time.
Yes.
Oh my.
I won't see you next week, but I'll see you this week. Yes, yes.
You'll have to get Benji and Kyle to fill you in. Um, but, uh, so going back to the second trolling moment. Cause remember, we've got New Day in the Ring. Daniel Bryan comes out, leaves three times, cause he just can't muster up the words and what he wants to announce. Uh, so Samoa Joe comes out and he says, well, if you guys are, you know, handing out championship matches, I'm here to challenge Kofi. And I'm like, oh shoot. They're gonna do it. Tonight's gonna be.
So ready.
And then they.
I was, I was so ready.
He's followed out by Elias. Elias is like, you had your shot. He's followed out by Randy Orton and I'm like, damn. Okay, so this is how we're getting to SummerSlam. You three are gonna face off. And then, and then in the most ridiculous, this don't make no damn sense. Everyone that came out, uh, Samoa Joe, Elias, Randy Orton. All vying for a shot at the WWE Championship. Elias is like.
Have a tag match, guys.
Elias is like, oh.
Getting a title match.
Hey, man, since we all want the title match and we don't, you know, there's no clear way to determine who gets it. Let's just do a three-way tag instead, you guys. It's, I like that they tried to play it off as realistic and had Randy Orton be like, no, I'm.
Fuck you, I'm a.
Yeah, but then of course.
New Day's like, you're a bitch.
Yeah, you're a coward. You're, 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 you're what? You're. Viper used to stand ready to strike and now it's gone limp.
Now it's limp.
Or it's like, oh, you can't crack no dick jokes at me. You're on three-way or six-man tag. And I was like, man, this is fucking stupid. We got trolled. We got so trolled.
That's not even what I'm talking about. No, I'm talking about later. The second troll is later.
Oh man, um, was it, was it during the match that we got trolled?
No, it was later on involving the women's tag titles and the.
Oh, okay. Yeah, yeah, yeah. We'll get to that. We'll get to that. I would say we got trolled into the six-man tag.
Yes, we did. Yeah, that's valid.
For real, I was turned off. The moment I realized that it was a tag match, I was like, you motherfuckers. I'm all excited, cause we might get a cool new world championship match lineup and y'all just. Screw us into a six-man tag with no.
The only thing this match was missing was two out of three falls.
Yeah, exactly, dude. There was not even any stakes to it. It was just like, oh, we'll all wrestle for no.
Matter of fact, a nice question from the Raw episode, what are you not looking forward to from Hayman and Bischoff? Six random ass six-man tag matches from teams that have never, ever tagged before. All of a sudden they're a tag team.
And it's one thing to have like factions, like established factions devolve into it. But just to have three guys like, I want a world title match. No, I want that match. No, I'm getting a match. We're like, oh, well.
How about instead, let's have a meaningless six-man tag.
Let's all just tag together instead, you guys. Man, fuck you guys. Stupid. Oh my god. I get it though. They gotta get their six-man tag on there and at least they tried something different, but this was fucking stupid.
Since there was nothing really good and worthy in this match, I'm gonna skip to the end and say. Your WWE champion caught an Arko and got pinned.
So is that, is that the new match, Rob? Is that the match to make at SummerSlam?
Hmm, no, that's not the match to make at SummerSlam, because these three guys are gonna be irrelevant next week and this match never happened.
This match never happened. No, it's gonna be Randy Orton. It'll be Randy Orton. Poor Samoa Joe. Samoa Joe is owing, I think, eight.
It'll probably be Joe, because what you just said about Daniel Bryan, like. HBK is my all-time favorite wrestler, but my favorite current active, I talked about how much I love Baron Corbin. I do love Baron Corbin. I love the heels. But my favorite dude is Randy Orton. I love everything about Randy Orton. But like you said, Randy Orton has done it all. Like when he was in Money in the Bank.
He's like a 13-time world champion.
Yeah, it was 13. They said it earlier. I thought, holy shit.
You know, the only people that have more confirmed reigns than Randy Orton are Triple H, John Cena and Ric Flair. That, that's it. Though, those are the only three people that have more.
Okay, so push him and let him get, let him get some more and catch up with him.
Yeah, he's, he's one more from tying Triple H.
They're not gonna do anything with Orton, because they've done it all with Orton. I mean, they might. I could very well be wrong. Anybody can be wrong at any time. But you get what I'm saying. They're not gonna really do anything with Orton. He's, he's young, but he's done it all.
He's got like five or 10 more years left in him if he wants to.
He's a good pawn. You need, you need eight guys in a Money in the Bank match? Oh shit, we need eight guys. Randy Orton, now we need seven guys.
And when he's motivated.
Exactly what tonight was.
When he's motivated, he's really good too.
He, he, he plays the good pawn. I mean, I'd love to see him Arko Kofi and take the title off him. I would love it. He's my favorite guy. But I don't think it's gonna happen. I really don't. I think Joe is the answer, because everybody wants Joe. Has Joe ever won the title?
No, that's, that's what I was touching on right now. Joe is looking really rough. Cause I wanna say, so I, he's winless in his world championship matches since being called up. And he's had like eight opportunities. He's been in eight world title matches and he's lost every single one of them. Not many guys can lay that claim that they've, they've lost. That many initial, I mean, there are, obviously there are wrestlers that have lost more than that, but for it to be literally. You are winless in those first eight. That's, that's a tough. That's rough, man, cause it, it really, it makes you look like the guy who can't get it done. You know, and you lose faith in that person. Um, and Joe's, uh, Joe's a maestro on the mic and I know you've heard it. Like Joe is legit on that mic and, um.
Phenomenal. He, he's, he's so good at promos.
Yeah, he can, he can build a feud with anybody. He can get you hyped, man. Sometimes, it's, sometimes he's a victim of his own doing because he's supposed to be healed, but he's so good on the mic. Y'all be cheering him as he's running down the babyface. You know what I mean? He'll get himself over.
I actually thought that today, how the whole thing when his music hits, there's a crowd chants, Joe, Joe, Joe. That crowd went nuts to. I actually thought that today, how the whole thing when his music hits, there's a crowd chants, Joe, Joe, Joe. That crowd went nuts tonight with Joe. You're not, I mean, Joe is awesome, but you're not supposed to be all about the heel coming out.
He's cool, man. Joe is just.
Gets it.
So cool, man. That's what he is. Cause if you, cause if you look at him, you know, he's, he's a, he's a pretty fat guy. You know, you would think that dude is unathletic. You know what I mean? If, if you just looked at a picture of him, but even, even his face is, he screams charisma. You know what I mean? But then like you get on the mic and you realize like, this dude is a badass. Like any preconceived notions of his body type. Or, um, anything else, man, go out the window. Dude's a, a legit badass and you would not wanna mess with Joe. Just what it feels, man. It's just how it feels. Um, but you're right, uh, in the end, it does, it does result with, uh, Randy Orton, RKO and Kofi Kingston for the victory.
Right. It's, it's, it's like, I love, it was a double-edged sword for me.
Yeah.
Like I love Randy Orton, I just said it, and I love the RKO. Like. I, I, if you hit, put a gun to my head and asked me, what is my favorite finisher of all time, I'd have to flip a coin between the RKO and Sweet Chin Music.
Yeah, I don't know, man. Mine's, mine's rough. Like nostalgia, I'd say Stone Cold Stunner. But then, but what's going on in modern? I love that Eclipse, man. That Eclipse is so cool. Yeah.
But it's just, I don't know. I, like, I seen it hit on the WWE.
And then you got Baron Corbin with the, with the, with the, um, you know, the end of days and, and, uh, Deep Six. Even though the Deep Six isn't a finisher, that's a hell of a move though. It's so cool. Um, but yeah, no, that's, that's a pretty good point. Um, so next up, we have our twenty-four seven. Uh, championship segment, and now Rob, I'm gonna ask you if you get this. Um, so Carmella's backstage looking for our truth and he, she finds him in what appears to be just some random washing machine. In, uh, in the back. So she, Truth pops out. Carmella says, hey, look, we gotta hide you in plain sight. We gotta go to Comic Con, which so cool. We're gonna get some Twitter and YouTube segments of, of them at. Comic Con. I can't wait for that. But then Truth drops a reference that I was really hoping Benji was here for, but maybe you'll get it. He, um, he says that I don't know how Kane used to, how Kane lived in one of these all the time or something. I don't get it. The only thing that made like, that I could connect with is, it looked like he was in a washing machine. And Kane was referred to as the big red machine, but I didn't get the reference. It went way over my head.
Damn, I didn't even catch that he said that. I have no idea.
Yeah.
I didn't even catch that he said that. I have no idea.
Yeah, yeah, oh yeah, cause he, he quickly dropped the line. It was obviously one of his jokes. That he, you know, cause Truth just rattles off jokes like, like fricking a machine gun. But yeah, he was like, I don't know how Kane lived in one of these things. And, and I was like, I was like, why do I feel like I should get that? But I was like, I don't get it. Um, but yeah, so I don't know. I don't know, man. Hopefully, hopefully Benji knows, otherwise I'm sure when we go off the air, hop on Twitter and someone's already fixed it and, and explained it. Um, Rob, this was your favorite match of the night, the Kabuki Girls for the SmackDown, or not the SmackDown, but the, the Women's. Tag Team Championships facing off the Iconics. Um, man, you, what was this? What was this for you, Rob? Like five stars?
Hmm. I love my Iconics. I love Peyton. I love Billy. Those who know me, know I love the cringe comedy. I love the comedy that they have, which is. Cringe comedy. It's my favorite thing in the whole wide world. I like, I keep saying it, I will keep saying it. I liked the Uzi Hot segment. I like Billy Kay and I like Peyton. I love what they do. You haven't defended your titles. Okay, whatever, that's Vince's doing. You, you bring out the Kabuki Warriors. A month ago and say when they, if they beat you in Tokyo, you're gonna get a title shot. If you beat the champ, you get a shot at. The champ for a title shot. No, that's not how it works. Um, okay, whatever. I'll deal with it. I forgot about it. They won in Tokyo. They kinda gave us a little thirty-second segment on, hey, they won in Tokyo. Now your Iconics are gonna defend the titles. And then before Extreme Rules, they were like, oh, but it's not gonna be Extreme Rules. Okay, what are you doing? Let's do this. And then they're like, out of nowhere, tomorrow night on SmackDown Live, they're gonna defend the titles. I was ready for my Iconics to lose their titles. Give it to the Warriors. The Warriors are already over. And give it to them. And then the Iconics get counted out. Come on, stop it. Stop it. I was, I'd lost all respect for the Iconics tonight. I really did. I know it's just character written. I know that it's just scripted. But just, what are you doing? What are you doing? Like make them bump into the referee on purpose to get DQ or something. But you coward out, you stand outside the ring and you get counted out. Come on, what are you doing? I was so hyped for this match. I was ready to see the titles change hands. And something get done with the titles, but they got counted out. I, I lost all respect. My notes end there. I was so mad. My notes end there. That's what I got. I was so mad. Like I went in the room and I told my wife, the Iconics got themselves counted out. Dude, I love the cringe comedy, but you're losing me. If you lost me, like, hmm, you, you, you done did something wrong. You did something wrong. Now, now people are like, okay, that's cool. They might lose them at SummerSlam, but it would've been better tonight. You would've got a bigger pop tonight. Having them lose the title.
Yeah, no, I mean, especially, cause people are ready for, um, people wanna see. Those tag team titles get defended. They wanna see the Women's Tag Division.
Valid.
They want, they, they wanna see good, I mean, in the, in the couple moments that we got in that match. Asuka and, and, um, oh my god, why, why am I blanking on her name right now? Um, Kyrie Sane showed insane wrestling chemistry with. Setting up, setting up rapid-fire tag team moves, cause there are tag teams that are thrown together. And it's just like two individual wrestlers getting their stuff in. And then there are tag teams that work together and they work. With like a synergy that you just can't get outside of tag team wrestling. Um. And they showed an insane chemistry. And what's funny is the Iconics are, are on a similar level. The Iconics work. Amazing together. It's just WWE doesn't wanna book them as strong. They want them booked as cowardly heels. So you can't come out and look impressive in the ring, unfortunately. Seth Rollins fell victim to the same thing. With his first, uh, universal title reign. Seth Rollins, an ace in the ring, but they wanted to book him like a cowardly heel. So you only got like half of his move set and you always had people interfering. Um, which is just not a fun way to enjoy wrestlers who are good at wrestling. Um, but yeah, you're right, man. Uh, they, they troll this hard, cause everything pointed towards them. Winning those titles tonight.
Everything. I even tweeted, I'm, I mean, I'm ready for the hurt of my Iconics losing the belt.
Thing is, is I knew it. I knew the second they were both outside the ring, dude, the ref was probably on the count of two. I was like, ah, no. And, um. And I think Billy Kay goes to climb on the ring and Peyton Royce pulls her back down and was like, nah, love, stay out here. I was like, oh, this is, this isn't good.
They're even on Twitter talking about day one hundred of being the tag team champs. You defended one time on two oh five live. If, if that, I don't even know if that happened. I have no idea. Like what, oh, come on, man. I've lost so much respect. I know it's all scripted and booked.
Yeah.
And I, I, Vince, are you booking your tag team women to, for me to hate them?
It's, they're probably just, like you said, they're probably just trying to find a way to get it to SummerSlam. But get those titles on TV and it was.
Then again, at the same time, because like, I, I, I keep saying it, guys, my brain fires at random times. I'm gonna pop so hard when they lose them belts at SummerSlam.
No, me too. Me too.
I mean, that's probably why they did it. And I'm an Iconics fan, like I, I don't. But they're gonna, but I'm gonna be like, boom, lose your stupid titles, because you're a stupid troll and you made me mad.
Alright, we gotta have our system. But yeah, Iconics take the countout loss. They remain your Women's. Um, Tag Championships probably going on to SummerSlam to lose them to the Kabuki Girls, cause there's really no other.
Speaking of Kabuki Girls, remember last episode when I was like, they can't speak English? And you were like, that's racist. But then, like, did you see their shirt promo? That they did? In one hundred percent Japanese, just saying, they didn't speak English. They didn't speak English. They spoke all Japanese. I just wanna throw that out there.
They saved their Japanese promos, cause WWE apparently has a Japanese YouTube page. And apparently that's where they put all the promos. And they don't even, the last I checked, they don't even put subtitles on them either. It's, it's literally just. Yeah, so, no, I say, I say honestly, dude, just let them have, let them cut their promos in Japanese. And then have, have someone translate it, man.
It made me want, I, it wasn't even translated.
You know, add subtitles. Shit, man. Put Shane McMahon on the mic backstage and just have him say, indeed, at the end of it, you know? Did you, oh, speaking of which, did you know that back in the day, do you remember Kaiyotei? And how they'd come out and do, oh, no, really? Oh, man, it was this plucky little, um, Japanese faction. Um. Most people remember the segment where they pretended to chop Val Venus's dick off. They say choppy choppy, you're PP. But, uh, anyways, Attitude Era was the Wild West back in the day.
I remember that, okay.
Yeah, Funaki and Takamichi Noku were the tag team members of it. And they got over as faces. But, um, what they would do is they did kinda like the Godzilla dub. They would, they would cut promos on the way to the ring. But there, there would be no audio to the mic. And then you had, um, like backstage, like someone would dub after they spoke. And, um, most of the time it was just like, it was just someone going, indeed. And that would, that would follow Funaki. And it turned out the person that did it was actually just Shane McMahon. Like Shane McMahon back in the day. Like he dubbed, he dubbed their voice. And it wasn't part of an angle. It was just, he was the person they used to dub, uh, Kaiyotei's voice. Little, uh, wrestling trivia for you. Um, but anyways, I don't know why. Whenever I remember, like, I have like all this, like. These little facts that have no reason to be in my brain, I gotta share them.
And they, and they fire in your brain and you gotta let them out.
Gotta let them out, man. Follow that up. We got our Apollo Crews and Andrade match. Um, Andrade jumps Cruz before the match begins. We've seen this match. Many times where Cruz gets squashed, and that's what happens here. All the way up to, Andrade hits his, uh. Not his hammerlock DDT, but his running knee strike into the turnbuckles. And he goes for the pin, which would look like it's over. Um, and Cruz rolls him up and gets the three count. Um, Cruz got a victory over Andrade, and I'd say it's about damn time, man. Um, cause Cruz is, Cruz is another guy that needs to be booked better, man. Not much else to add on to this, um, but other than happy to see Cruz get a win. And I'm happy to see him beat Andrade finally. We'll see where it goes. Uh, Rob, you got anything to add to it, or is that pretty much it? It was, it was a quick match.
Yeah, I mean, that's it. I personally don't like seeing him go over Andrade, but I mean.
You gotta get one back, man. You can't get bullied all the time. Uh.
That, that, that's true. That's, that's the classic. I feel Andrade deserves more, but I mean.
Andrade, Andrade undoubtedly deserves more. He does. Um, but Cruz does too. It'd be okay. It'd be okay. It'd be alright. Um.
Not everybody can beat everybody.
Exactly. No, I know. Uh, we get a recap of the Bray Wyatt incident from Raw. Which watching, watching back the edited version gave me chills. I am, I am, my body is ready for Bray Wyatt. I tell you what. Holy moly, I'm ready for that dude to come and wreck Finn Balor and then just wreak terror. On just people left and right. And I hope all the wrestlers sell like his terror. Like dude, I ain't messing with the Fiend. Like hell no, I ain't, I'm being, I ain't being in that match. I'm going home then. You know, you can fine me or suspend me. You are not putting me in the match against the Fiend. Look what happened to Finn. He's gone. We ain't seen him in months, you know? You know, that's what's gonna happen. Oh my god. Screw that, man. I like, I like the kid show host. I'll watch that in the live audience. Second the Fiend comes though, I'm out, man. Um, that's how they need to book it. It's like, no one wants to be there. Um, and then we got the main event, man. Uh, Kevin Owens, Dolph Ziggler. Awesome. Sweet. I love me some Dolph Ziggler on the screen. God knows, man.
At least it's not Dolph Kofi.
It's true. No, very, that, what, to steal from your, to your, uh, dictionary, valid. Yeah, dude. Yeah, um, this was just, uh, this was, this match was more to serve. To lengthen, um, the story with Shane. The match was, um, more back and forth than their Extreme Rules match, which was. Honestly, just a seventeen-second squash match. Um, once Kevin Owens starts to get the upper hand though. Uh, Shane brings, Shane comes out, makes his way to ringside, followed by the heel locker room, so all your heels. Um, they surround the ring, but they keep their presence light. They don't, they don't actually attack Kevin Owens. It almost, I almost thought they were gonna cut to commercial, and then they were gonna restart the match as a lumberjack match, is what I thought they were setting up for. Um, but Ziggler, uh, uh, this does lead to Kevin getting distracted. Ziggler hits the zigzag, only manages the two count. Kevin Owens gets the stunner as he's getting the, about to get the three count. Shane McMahon reaches, pulls Kevin Owens out from the ring. Kevin Owens gives Shane a stunner and then. With all the logic, cause a lot of the time wrestlers throw logic out. No. Kevin Owens stuns Shane McMahon and then takes the hell off. Screw this match. I know what's coming next. You're about to have half the locker room beat me down. I'm out, dude. Kevin Owens takes off. We, uh, we close out the show. I love the fact that Shane McMahon is like on the ground, like possibly concussed from a Stone Cold Stunner. And an interviewer comes up like, Shane, do you have a response? While he's like struggling to breathe, cause he's got a collapsed esophagus. Like, yes, make Shane look pathetic, dude. Yes.
He got dropped in that stack of dimes, he calls it neck.
Oh my god, dude, I love it. But, um, he just says, I think he says something along the lines like, Kevin Owens will pay. Kevin, you're gonna pay. And then SmackDown goes off the air. A simple and easy show to digest. Only a couple hiccups. The, 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 the six-man tag match, eh, was, was, oh man, that was disrespectful. You set that up on us and then, like, like Rob mentioned, the Iconics, uh, cheap count out to hold their titles. You know, it's one thing if you see it coming, but I didn't, I, I instantly did not see it coming, man. I really, I was like, dude, they booked this match? Oh yeah, Iconics finally dropping their belt. I, I did not see them doing the whole like. Champion's advantage, uh, story. But it was good, man. It was good. It was good. Um. So I mean, what do we have to look forward here? So what, what, what was established, Rob? We got, looks like it's gonna be Randy Orton, Kofi Kingston. For the world championship. We got Nakamura, uh, facing Ali. That's good. Alistair Black established himself dominant by getting his, his second win over Cesaro, so that's probably tossed out. Black's gonna get someone else now. Um. I mean, yeah, you're right. They did do a lot for some, this really progressed a lot of stuff, cause then we got, you also had, um, you had, uh, what, what'd you say, um?
TV time.
Where she's gonna get a repackaged. We're getting that. Buddy Murphy finally debuts. Damn, you know, they quietly did a lot with this SmackDown. Like they quietly did a lot of stuff with this. Um, Apollo got a, a victory, although that one, that one isn't quite as impactful. Um. We don't have, uh, tag contenders yet for the New Day. Uh, who we wanna see that be, Rob? Right now, it's, it's just Heavy Machinery, right? Heavy Machinery is the only other SmackDown tag team.
That and maybe the, I don't know, the Viking Raiders?
Yeah, but they're raw though.
Card, wild card, blah, 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 blah. You don't really have a tag team division, so you're gonna take what you can get.
Essentially, no, you, valid. I'm still your word now. Um. Yeah, yeah, no, they did, man. They, they did a lot in this match and they did it quietly. Cause it's only now that I'm actually recapping it, do I realize they, this, this episode progressed a lot of stories. To go forward. Yeah, that's cool, man. That's, that's really cool. Um, so the low, the low point of it, like I said, was those matches. Then now, obviously. Joe looks like he's hit a wall. Um, Elias was never really in the picture, so. Yeah, that was so stupid, Elias coming, I want a world championship. Like Elias, piss off. You haven't won a singles match in ages. Yeah, man, good match, dude. Um, we don't have any questions, do we?
Not that I'm aware of. We had the one, that's it.
Yeah, the one, that was raw.
From Raw.
Yeah, I mean, good show, man. Um, look forward to next week. What's gonna happen on, um, what's gonna happen on that reunion? You think it's just gonna be a nostalgia, you haven't, have you seen any of these stupid Raw's, like the Raw twenty-fifth anniversary or Raw episode one thousand? Although honestly, episode one thousand was better than the twenty-fifth, but.
Wait, which one had like DX all up on it?
Had what?
Had DX all up on it.
DX?
Yeah.
The one, the episode one thousand, they had, um, they had Road Dogg. And Jesse James reformed the New Age Outlaws.
Yeah, and it was at, uh, that little, that small club that like the first Raw ever was at or whatever they were talking about.
Well, the one, no, 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 no. So the one at the Barclays, I know, I can't remember. Maybe it's the Barclays. I can't remember where it is. But Raw twenty-fifth anniversary, which was last year, I think. Um, that show was so ill-paced and garbage. Cause so the, the, you're right, that one did have the DX reunion and they beat down the revival. Um. But for the people in that arena, the majority of the show took place at the other arena. And they didn't do anything during the dead airtime. So those people stood around for hours and they paid. Dude, the ticket cost to get in the arena that night was outrageous. So essentially, all those people. So essentially, all those people paid hundreds and hundreds, some of people over a thousand dollars for tickets just to stand around and watch Raw take place somewhere else. And only got a couple segments. So it was, it was, it wasn't booked well and honestly, it was kind of uneventful. Like, nothing stands out outside of, yeah, like DX is the only thing I actually, I really remember. Was DX coming out and Finn Balor getting a two-sweet. What I'm trying to get at is usually when they hold these special Raw's where they get a bunch of old timers, I hate to call you guys that, but they get a bunch of veterans or legends on the show. They end up having like no substance and it's just like a pageant. Like have these guys walk out. And then of course, the dreaded thing that they do is they have them beat down the new talent, which is not, dude, you cannot have your new talent get beat down by old timers who can't wrestle anymore. Because what's that say about your current crop of wrestlers? They suck. They're not as good as the Attitude Era wrestlers and they can't even beat the Attitude Era wrestlers now that they're, um, geriatric. You know what I mean? So I hate when they do that, man. Cause it doesn't do anyone any favors. These are the guys that you have to watch week in and week out, you know? So it's weird. The Ascension were destroyed by, um, a bunch of old timers on a Raw show that came back. And then of course, the Revival were destroyed by DX. And neither of those tag teams really accomplished as too much since then. Although the Revival, you know, being your current champions, you could say they've done more now, but it has taken a long ways to get to this point. And the Ascension never recovered. I bet you're like, I bet you're sitting there going, who's the Ascension?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, yeah, they were, they were undefeated in NXT. They were like the most dominant NXT tag team champions to come through there when they did. And when they came up to Raw, they got beat down by a whole ton of legends like JBL and Farouk and a couple other legends. And then they never recovered. They just became jokes afterwards. It was, it was sad. Poor Ascension. You don't even know who they are anymore. They're supposed to be big stuff. Okay, we're leaving the show on a low moment. Rob, you gotta bring us back, man. I'm poo-pooing on like next week's show and we need people excited to watch it, so they'll listen to us.
Oh, next week's show's gonna be amazing.
Yeah, screw everything Kyle said. No, Kyle's wrong.
I mean, I'm gonna be a bother. I mean, you know what's gonna happen? It's like, are you ready? And then there's gonna be green stuff on the Titan Tron and it's gonna be like, break it down. That's all you need. That's all you need.
I'd rather, I'd rather look forward to the glass shatter for Stone Cold.
Okay, yeah.
Nothing tops that glass shatter.
Go ahead and ruin my moment. Nothing, nothing.
I'm sorry, Rob. I'm sorry. No, that's not what I mean.
I mean, that, no, that's valid for sure. Like, the biggest pop in their history of wrestling ever will be that glass shatter. I don't care what you do down the road. That glass shatter will be the, the pop of pops of all time.
It's, 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 uh, it's like one A, one B with that and then, um, hearing The Rock. Um, how does, how's his?
Do you smell what The Rock is cooking?
Yeah, you hear that in the beginning of his music. Oh, man, crowd light up, dude. You get goosebumps. You legitimately get goosebumps hearing that shit. Um, yeah, man. Y'all tune in next week, man. This is a really long drawn out, outro. Trying to just kill some time here. But we're about an hour, almost an hour and fourteen minutes in, so that's a good show.
I'm going to bed, guys.
Yeah, man. Hey, remember, uh, hop on Twitter, say, listen to at, go, or not at GoingInRaw, Jesus, I'm plugging someone else's podcast. Listen to at SmackRawPod and get yourself some free wrestling merch. Uh, we'll send it out to you. Otherwise, y'all enjoy the week. Have fun time. Look forward to seeing you guys next week. Otherwise, me and Benji will see you guys on the Thursday episode, uh, where we cover NXT and Two Oh Five Live. Y'all, peace out.